This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for November 15th, 2021. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Disaster Proclamation, Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and a determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Although public attendance is not limited at this time, persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. I would like to remind you that this meeting is being recorded this evening. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bremel.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Christel.
Here.
Alderman Widener is excused. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
City Clerk Julie Clark, here. City Treasurer Anne Behrens. Excused. City Attorney Brooke Lendeman.
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Thank you. Police Chief Ray Toronto.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Thank you, Julie. One additional note, it's the city's policy to require face coverings during all public meetings at City Hall regardless of vaccination status unless a minimum of six feet of separation from others can be consistently maintained, which we have done at the dais this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice alone.
We have two proclamations this evening, one for School Board Members Day and President of our School Board, Chris Crabtree, is here to accept that. And we have Christmas Sharing Week and our perennial Christmas Sharing Person Fred Olmos is here tonight, so we'll go to the dais and take care of that, these two plessetries right now. Chris, would you join me, please?
School Board Members Day, November 15th, 2021. Whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting with community expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wide expenditure on scarce tax salary, they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds and other areas of school districts that the community has put in their trust. And whereas school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear shared vision of public education for their schools that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their district. And whereas school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer the board's policy, they are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours to public service with no compensation. And whereas employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members, generously lending support and time, employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school district and citizens they represent, though sometimes tremendous sacrifices to the employer. And whereas decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their community, placing them at the front line for American democracy. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim November 15th, 2021, as School Board Members Day, as a way to honor those citizens who devote so much of their time and energy for the education of our children, and I might add that particularly, we appreciate your service so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bremel. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Bremel, and thank you also to the Warrenville City Council. We are so fortunate to have a great working collaborative relationship with you, you guys have always been partners with us over the years, and we greatly appreciate that and look forward to continuing that in the years to come. That's a week, thank you. Thank you.
Fred, let's do it again.
Mayor, make sure you're talking right into the mic. I don't think I can hear you too well. I think so. I just got a message from somebody.
Okay.
Ah, it wasn't on. The mic wasn't on.
Excuse me.
Julie's diverse talents are being used tonight.
Thank you.
Just in case.
Thank you so much. Congratulations on your launch.
Thank you.
All right, my friend. Christmas Sharing Week 2021, December 5th through December 11th. Whereas Christmas Sharing, which began in 1969, is a community-based organization serving families within the boundaries of the Wheaton-Warnville Community School District 200. And whereas schools within District 200, churches, businesses and other organizations collect funds and items for distribution to families in December. And whereas Christmas Sharing, which originally served seven families, and you were involved in that first one, no? Seems like it. You've been here every year I've been here. And whereas Christmas Sharing, which originally served seven families, has grown over the years and served nearly 600 families in 2020, 144 of them greeted by volunteers at the Warrenville site alone. And whereas the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the organization strives to serve families the best and healthiest means possible. And whereas collections will provide food and gift cards for the less fortunate. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim the week of December 5th through 11th, 2021, as Christmas Sharing Week in Warrenville, to bring awareness that contributions made during this season of giving will help make the holiday season merrier for families who are less fortunate, and we're very grateful for what you do, Fred. Thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I got a few words.
All right, good.
Very good. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bremel and City Council and virtual attendees. I get your call. On behalf of the entire Christmas, Denise DeCiani, our fearless leader, had a conflict tonight. She's meeting with the, with the, with the main board, main Christmas sharing board tonight, putting last minute, working on last minute detail, so she sends her apologies. On behalf of the entire Christmas sharing organization, I would like to express our appreciation to the City of Warrenville, selected officials and employees for your cooperation, your continued support of this program. Because of COVID-19, this year's program, like last, will be a drive-up event. Over 720 School District 200 families, 224 from the Warrenville area, will receive gift certificates, personal items, and in partnership with the Illinois, Northern Illinois Food Bank, boxes of nutritious food items. This year's distribution for Warrenville residents will be held on the evening of December 10th in the parking lot of the Wellspring Alliance Church located on Butterfield Road. Thank you again, and a joyous holiday season to you all.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Take care. We will now hear any verbal or written comments from the public. We have one person who signed up in person this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court, about 300 feet of my property is adjacent to the Conforty property at its north end. I am requesting a scaled site plan of the proposed house, barn and private road and identified on the Conforty PUD plan.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any emails this evening?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone on the line who wishes to make comment? Please identify yourself and speak up.
Mayor, it's Assistant City Administrator White. I just want to let everyone know that the Channel 10 live broadcast is not working right now because of technical difficulty, so we will make sure that the go-to-meeting recording is played or available on YouTube online for anyone who wants to watch the meeting.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, hearing none, no other additional comments, once we conclude this section of our meeting, there will be not another opportunity. We'll move on to official and staff comments. I have nothing to add this evening. Clerk?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Treasurer is not here, and Alderman, one at a time, beginning with Alderman Anderson. Good evening, Alderman.
Good evening. No comments tonight?
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Christel.
No comments tonight, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Widener is excused, and finally Alderman Wilson.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I do have a comment tonight that I'd like to share. And I have talked with you, as you know, and I've informed the mayor that for personal reasons, I will be resigning as the Alderman for Ward Two, effective on December 31st of this year. I appreciate that, and I worked for, in 10-plus years that I've had the privilege to serve. But again, I would just like to let the mayor know that I will be resigning on the 31st of December. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, and needless to say, we will miss you. Your service has been excellent. Thank you for letting us know. City Administrator.
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And City Attorney Brooke.
I have nothing to add, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Now we'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion, please? Alderman Widener's not here, so someone's going to have to pick up the slack.
Alderman Goodman. Alderman Goodman, I will make a motion to approve the agenda for the November 15th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Ashauer.
And we have a motion and a second on approving the agenda. Any discussion? Please identify yourself and speak up. Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Widener. Oops, sorry, he's excused. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented for this evening. We have two sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Goodman, would you like to make that motion?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 1st, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting, as well as to approve the minutes of the November 8th, 2021 Community Development Committee meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes? Again, hearing none. Yes.
This is Alderman Berry. I was unable to attend the meeting for November 8th, so I will not be able to vote.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? We have a roll call then, Clerk, please.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Berry, would you like to voice your vote for the 11:01 minute?
Aye for 11:01.
I am sorry. All right. Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye. We could split it into two motions if that makes it more straightforward. That might be the correct way to do it.
All right, does the second agree to that? To split the motion into two?
Yes.
Okay, so we go back now and vote just on the first one?
That's, that's fine. You can go back and just do the roll call for the first round of minutes and then a roll call for the second.
Okay, good.
Yeah, just start over.
Start over again. We'll do just the first set of minutes first.
All right, redo. All right. For 11:01, Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Berry. Oops, sorry, Alderman Christel. Oh, yes, you are on that one, sorry. Now I'm confused. Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Okay.
Very good. Motion carries. Now the second motion for the second set of minutes.
Alderman.
Please.
Okay. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 0202-1-42, amending city code to eliminate the electrical commission and the electrical contractor registration requirement. B, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and pass resolution R2021-65, approving tasks order number four with Terracan Consultants, Inc., for construction engineering services for the 2021 Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two Asbestos Abatement and Building Demolition Project in the amount of $21,468. C, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and pass resolution R2021-66, approving the purchase of a cab and chassis for the Public Works Dump Truck from Rush Truck Center through the joint, State Joint Purchasing Program in the amount of $83,972. D, Receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on September 14th, 2021. E, Accept, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Awareness Commission meeting held on December 20, September 21st, 2021. F, Receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on October 12th, 2021. G, Receive and file reports of invoices paid up to November 10th, 2021 in the amount of $26,601.42. H, Authorized Expenditures or Invoices Due On or Before December 6th, 2021 in the amount of $109,862.41. And I, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of October 2021 in the amount of $12,448. May I have a roll call or motion, please, in a second? Motion to approve the agenda as read?
I move to.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve the agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Christel. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have nothing under the regular agendas category, nothing under unfinished business, no new business is listed, but we do however have the need for a closed session this evening. May I have a motion in a second to enter into closed session?
This is Alderman Berry. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, c p r n 1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimonies on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter into closed session. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We will now be going into closed session. We will not be conducting any business after this closed session, but anyone wishing to stay on the call may do so until the meeting has officially ended.